I'd like to call the order of the December 19th, 2017, regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, invite you to stand if you choose, while Commissioner Nash leads us in the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would, please bow your heads with me while you pray, if you so choose. People are often unreasonable and self-centered, forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives, be kind anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you, be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous, be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow, do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough, give your best anyway. Amen.
If you would, please face the flag with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight, sir?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I'm proud on behalf of the city to announce for the sixth year in a row, we've received recognition from the Governor's Finance Officer Association for the presentation of our budget document. So, and that goes a lot of kudos to the budget team, especially for Aaron Bellou, who put it together and made it look good. So, we have good news twice on the budget, the message itself, as well as the presentation. So, I'd just like to thank all the budget team, especially Aaron, for that work.
Congratulations, thank you all so much. Anyone else? You have any comments for us tonight, sir?
I do. There'll be a need for a late file.
Second.
Second by Williams, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Approval of the minutes on the regular meeting of December 5th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Denning, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First item is municipal order 2017-247.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Brandy R. Green to the position of Housing Division Assistant in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor, we had an opening in the Housing Division, NCS, we went out to solicitation, we received 119 people who wanted to work for us, we reduced that down to 42 minimum qualification, we interviewed and tested 10, and from that vetting, Brandy Green was determined, in our opinion, to be the best candidate for the position, she has four years of experience in office manager, as well as one particular year in property management, which is helpful in this position. This is probably, the position represents the first line of services we provided, NCS. I believe Brandy's here, Michael? Oh, there you are, hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome, congratulations, excited for you. Hope you're interested in working hard, because I know who you work for there, taskmaster. Any comments, or?
It's not going to be easy for...
That's the truth.
There's some good people in the department, but...
Mostly.
Welcome.
Please call them.
Our department heads, well, that's all I'm going to say.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon? Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you so much. Municipal order 2017-248.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Dan K. Busselmeyer Jr., Alan A. Bush, Lauren P. Cecil, Austin B. Connor, Joshua L. Dennison, Kenneth W. James Jr., Dakota P. Justice, Corey W. Mahaney, and Shathen R. McCoy, and transfer of Roy D. Rogers to the position of firefighter in the fire department.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams, I had Shathen E. McCoy, you said R, E? I have R.
R on the sheet, but it... Do we have a correction? E, alright, we'll fix that, thank you.
R on the agenda, yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, I thought it'd be appropriate to let the public know what it takes to be a fireman in our community, and the process that these people have to go through, so I asked Michael to put together a little overview of the process, and to tell you a little bit about what we've done.
Tribs, what does it take to be a firefighter?
A lot of hard work. We started back in June, advertising the position, and here we are, ready to appoint 10 individuals to start to work for us in January. Both the Human Resources and Fire Department work on an annual recruitment and selection process, we started off with 243 applicants, of whom 152 actually showed up for our written test, August 5th, that was 63%, which is just slightly below where it was last year. HR reviews the applications and their scores, and then passed on a little over 100 to fire for review. One thing we did a little differently this year, the Chief Coulson and his staff wanted to do is, in the past, we've interviewed about 40 candidates, so when you have 100, you potentially have left out a lot of good people, so what they did this time is actually went through and looked at the applicants who they had interviewed the previous year, those that they felt were good candidates, they went ahead and moved on to the interview, looked at all the rest of the applicants, and then we did quick interviews with 66 individuals, we actually had two teams interviewing simultaneously, so that allowed them to look at around 76 candidates, rather than 40. From that point, 30 individuals received a full interview, members of the Workforce Recruitment Outreach Committee, Citizen Committee also sat in on those interviews. From that point, we moved 18 candidates on to the polygraph and the psychological assessment, and from that, now have an eligible list of 13 candidates. In addition to all that, the candidates had to go through the Candidate Physical Agility Test, or CPAT, which is a national fitness test, we have to allow eight weeks for candidates to prepare for and take that test, and then, of course, we also did the background checks. Presently, the Fire Department has two vacancies, one due to retirement, but we have another retirement at the end of this month, two more expected in January, for a total of five. Because we only recruit and have one recruit class a year, we try to anticipate what openings we're going to have, and therefore, the city manager authorized us to fill a few more positions anticipating more retirements between now and the summer. Of the group we present to you, at least six of them have competed at least twice, I believe at least three have applied with us at least four times. Among the group, we've got three who are presently full-time firefighters with another Fire Department in South Central Kentucky, we've got a couple who are volunteers, we have three who are EMTs, and we have our police officer, Roy Rogers, who has requested the transfer. I believe at least nine of the candidates are here, if you all at least stand. And this is the class plus one more, who is not here, that we're recommending for appointment or transfer.
See you here tonight. Have any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, congratulations to each other. And feel free to slip out if you want to, because we're about as interesting as watching paint dry up here most of the times. If I'm that interesting, I got it. Municipal order 2017-249.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Joanna Futral and Joanne Powell, and appointment of Barry Pruitt to the City of Bowling Green Board of Ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams, this is reappointment of two people who've completed their first term, looking forward to their continued work, and ask you to consider Barry Pruitt, retired police officer currently working for Houghton's Industries in their loss prevention area. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-250.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-09 for the Census Track 112 Exterior Property Improvements Program from Live the Dream Development Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $250,000.
Come in. Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, we're trying to do some creative things with our neighborhood improvement program, to take federal money and to congregate in an area that can have an impact, instead of dispersing across various places in the community. One of the things we're doing is exterior improvements, it's a program we've done before, but we're again wanting to try to do it in Census Track 12. I thought it'd be helpful for the public and for the commission to have Brent Childress again give us a quick overview of what we're doing with this money, and why.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity. Whenever we started the Neighborhood Improvements Program a few years ago, I think I stood before you all and said, you know, we've got a lot to learn as we do this, one of the things that we learned was we need to rely more on partners. So, we've had to change course on some of the things that we're doing, and some of the investments that we're making in the community as we roll out this Neighborhood Improvements Program, to increase our timeliness and efficiency of making those investments. And tonight is one of those steps. Tonight is looking for a partner that can come in, develop, administer, and manage a program, we're calling the Exterior Improvements Program, which is very similar to what we did in 1052, under the Private Property Improvements Program. So, to find that partner, we issued an RFP, we issued out a request, and laid out kind of the guidelines, the rules of everything, and the only responsive one that we received back was from Live the Dream, and they modeled a lot of the program off kind of what we had already done in the 1052. So, there's a whole lot of overlap in that, there is one big change, we talked with them about this, and felt like this was the best course of action, based on what we'd learned of administering a similar program in 1052. So, whenever we're doing it now, we've completed about 75 projects out of about 117 properties that were approved, the property owner was responsible for going out and finding the contractor, paying for everything, and then we would just reimburse. And we felt like that created an additional barrier that we didn't realize on the front end, and as we moved into some other neighborhoods, we felt like that barrier would be increased dramatically, and make it more prohibitive for people to take advantage of the program to make these types of investments into their property. And what we're looking at is investments can be very simple things, it can be removing an old tree, removing landscaping, paving a driveway, the things that really make the curb appeal improvements to a property, and we've seen tremendous benefits of this program in 1052. So, the one thing that is different from this is, Live the Dream will be having a pool of contractors that will go out and do work on this, up to the $5,000 limit for those similar type projects. So, that is a big change, but it takes the burden off the property owner to go out and find contractors, and one of the things we've seen pretty steadily lately with the growth and the pace of the construction industry here locally, it's hard to find contractors to come in and do work, so this way allows them to pool some of that, to bring in a group of contractors to do that work. So, they will be administering, managing, they're taking over a full responsibility of the program in the 112 area, and as you've heard Nick and I say many times, the 112 area is roughly Old Baron River Road to Old Morgantown Road, and roughly Normal View West to the city limits of Bowling Green. So, this is just one of the programs that we're doing in Neighborhood Improvements, but we felt like it was an important investment to look at the already built housing stock in the neighborhood, to already look at the existing structures that are there, and ways that we could make these types of improvements, and Live the Dream is going to come alongside us as we make that move into it. And I'll entertain any questions or concerns anyone might have.
I'll answer your question.
So, who is the first contact for the property owner? Where does that person go? Step one?
Step one, step one's going to be for Live the Dream to finalize the application, market the program, receive applications, so this is all on them. So, if people are in that 112 area, once they release the program, I mean, right now we're just awarding the agreement, awarding the contract, they'll have to roll this out, so that would still be, you know, a month or so before they get it going, it would be contact Live the Dream, which is at the Housing Authority, fill out an application, get everything rolling at that point. And, you know, the third responsibility in which we will assist them with in some, is that marketing outreach communication about the program, because, you know, it's like any other program, there's a limited amount of funds available to do anything, so there has to be some cutoff point in there, and, you know, making sure that you all are aware, and that the citizens are aware that this program is available just in this geographic area. That was one question that we got a lot of whenever we did it in 1052, well, I live out in Briarwood, well, yeah, but that's not in this area, so you gotta be in this area, we're doing this one area at a time, so we can focus our investments into each neighborhood as we move through the city and the Bowling Green reinvestment area.
And landlords, property managers can approach and request?
That's correct, sir. Now, they would be responsible for hiring their own contractors, I think the way that Katie wrote the guidelines, it was homeowner occupied could use the pool of contractors, but landlords, I believe, are responsible for their own securing of contractors to do the work, but yes, and there's a match ratio, just like where we used it in 1052, homeowners, so if you own and live in your property, you are eligible for 100%, no match, up to $5,000. Landlords are eligible up to $5,000, but they must spend $6,250, which works out to be an 80/20 match, so they have to have some skin in the game. Businesses, which we don't expect to have very many of at all in this neighborhood, just because there's a very limited number of businesses in this entire neighborhood area, there's a 50/50, so they have to spend $10,000 to get $5,000. And so, what we've seen in 1052 is some maximize and get the whole $5,000, some end up just with, you know, $4,800, $4,700, things like that, so it's hard to know what your exact number of properties is going to be, because you don't know that everybody's going to spend the full amount each time, and those things can roll over into another project.
Quick question.
Always.
Based on conversation that I had with you a couple, three weeks ago, I am a property owner, or a property manager, and I approach about having some renovation work done. And the contractors, let me ask this, I guess, before, how much work will your people, code enforcement being involved in this contractual agreement with Live the Dream?
Very little to none.
Okay, going back, I've requested a renovation, I contacted Live the Dream, and they come out and meet me, and that person from Live the Dream noticed that there may be a major code enforcement that you're not asking for that money for, are you asking for something else? Does the application process stop there? Where Live the Dream says, I think you've got a code violation here, and you need to maybe see someone else, you, about this violation, before we can approach you about your requested renovation?
I won't say that it stops there, Live the Dream has the discretion of making recommendations, changes, approvals, denials to somebody's application, and I can speak from the experience that we had as doing our Private Property Improvements Program, somebody might apply for something, Nick would go out, take the pictures, bring it back to our committee group, looking at it, and we're going, yeah, we're not paying for that, but we'll be glad to pay for this fence, or this tree, or this over here, that is either a code enforcement violation, or an eyesore, and then they'd go, okay, I'm good with that. So, I won't say that the application just stops, because that application could also be to remedy that code violation, and a lot of the times, the things that we saw that we were able to tackle weren't code violations, but they were things that were perceived to be code violations, and that's what has helped a lot in just changing some of the appearance of the neighborhood, they weren't code violations, but people thought that they should be, because they were not pretty, that sort of thing.
It seems like a great opportunity to help disabled folks, or elderly, or someone who just physically can't make a repair to their home, so I would hope that the communication of this gets to those people.
And it's always hard whenever you're communicating across a broad swath of people in an entire geographic area, but that was one of the questions in the RFP that they had to respond to, what is your plan? How are you planning to communicate this? The other thing to think of is, how are you going to plan to, what is your plan to communicate this to people who don't speak English in this neighborhood? Because we were aware that there's a high concentration of non-native speaking, non-native English speakers in this neighborhood. The 112 area is really kind of a fascinating area, once you spend some time in and kind of go through and look at some of the information that's there, and we've learned a lot about it, even though we had a level of familiarity with it, we've still learned a lot about it. But we think it's an opportunity for people to increase the, kind of, the value of the home, we picked this up from some other cities that have had really good success with this type of program, and just changing the outside appearance of the home just boosts everything. And if you look at it, whenever we start, we've had a couple of streets where we've had a lot of these hit, boom, 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 and it just changes the entire street then, it's not just one house, it's five houses, it's six houses. So, the, right now, and their request was for $250,000, we have $500,000 budgeted for this program, so what we're looking for is to get started, kind of test everything, get through it, and then if everything's moving as we feel like it should, then we could allocate another $250,000 with y'all's permission to keep this program moving forward, so we could do more properties in the 112 area.
Does Live the Dream get paid on a percentage of what is spent in the neighborhood, or a flat fee?
There's a flat budget part for their expenses, because they are actively managing and administering this program, this is a, this is a cost, this is time, Nick and I have been doing it for several months, and we recognize that we can't continue to do it if we want to do all these other things, we have to have partners, and that's why we went with an RFP process, because we understood that this is a true contract relationship with somebody, and this is what we'll be looking at as we move forward in this Neighborhood Improvements Program, is more this RFP relationship, more contract relationship, as opposed to the grant relationship that we traditionally used. So, you know, there was a defined service, there was a defined thing, and then there's a budget allocation in there for their cost.
Financial?
Yes. What's that?
What way have you implemented financial accountability?
The financial accountability is one, they have a limitation on the budget, so they can't overcharge that, they have a, we give them an approximation of 40 houses, and that's based on $5,000 per house, so if you work out the budget, it's about $50,000 to run a $200,000 program, they have some hourly rates set aside in there for the program administrators, time to run the program, but until you, they kind of get into it and figure it out, we're giving them a little bit of flexibility to kind of figure that out, and then we can dial that in as we move into Phase Two of this hopefully down the road.
Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order 2017-251.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Carter Lumber Company.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to have Jeff Mizel entertain this and explain it to the commission, please.
Is these next two items on your agenda are job development incentive agreements, Commissioner Nash and Commissioner Paragon, along with city manager, are on the Job Development Incentive Program Committee. We met a few weeks ago, this first one is Carter Lumber Company, they're proposing to open up a facility in the Trans Park, 50 new jobs, $10 million capital investment, this is a KBI, under the Kentucky Business Investment Program under the state, where the state provides 3% withholding credit, the city matches it with a 1% for 10 years, this incentive would be worth about $175,000 to the company over that 10-year period. I'll go ahead and touch on the second one, it's Cove Bay Aluminum Automotive Products, that one is an expansion in the South Industrial Park at Cove Bay, they're proposing to create 129 new jobs, it's a $51.3 million capital investment, again, it's under the KBI program with the state, where the city matches up to 1% for 10 years, and that incentive would be worth approximately $518,000 to the company. I will mention, on the Cove Bay, the city would capture approximately $609,000 in new withholdings, and on the Carter Lumber, the city's portion that they would reap would be $206,000 in the new job withholdings over the 10 years, so I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions?
I have one for Meredith, please. Meredith, in your many positions that you have with these companies coming in, do we in the employment process encourage them to hire percentages based on the available workforce in the community?
They only receive the credit from the state and from you guys on jobs that they are sourced by people who live in Bowling Green, in the state of Kentucky, so they can't source from outside unless they're going to move here, and the state won't pay for somebody who lives across the state line.
So, minority individuals in the workforce area are be, will be encouraged to apply, and the companies will be encouraged to support that effort?
Companies are, they're going to hire all the qualified people they can get right now, we have a huge shortage of people, as you guys are well aware, in our community, we've actually got a couple of items next on the agenda to talk about that, but they will hire all able-bodied people that are qualified for the positions that they have.
They are going to hire 100 people, and 100 able-bodied people are 100 whites, are they going to hire them?
It depends on who applies for the positions, I mean, the reality of, right now, that our manufacturers are facing is that there aren't enough people to fill the openings that we currently have, so they're currently stealing from each other. These two companies, since they're new, they'll be adding positions for first shift, so the reality is, is the people that are on second or third shift of the other companies will jump to these companies.
And I understand, and I think you know what my thoughts are and interests are in any companies that come in our community here, I hope that there is a cross-section of individuals working in all of our companies.
I believe the state checks to see if they've got an equal opportunity employer kind of designation or certification, so I think the state would look out for that and manage that part.
Will the state let us? Will the, will the state let us know, or give us copies of those reports?
They have to file reports with the state, reporting who they hired, how many they've hired, and it's, it's-
Pretty intensive.
It's a lot closely, like, managed closer than it used to be, so.
I understand that. My question is, will we, the city government of Bowling Green, be able to get a copy of that hiring process and the numbers they have?
You can get copies of whatever they're reporting to the state, that's public record. We can get that.
Okay. I'd like to request that that be a part of any and all future formats that we know as elected leaders of this community, who is being hired at these companies, that the city of Bowling Green is playing their part in, financial-wise, uh, as to who's been hired. Because we are the ones that people call and ask, uh, is any way we can get, or I can get some help on a job here, or a job there? And I realize, based on what you, uh, and I mean, you know I'm not being critical of you.
I understand, I understand.
But if the person comes to me and they ask for one of those jobs, and Meredith says here's what we're looking for, I'm not gonna send the guy out there that is not gonna fit in. But if there is a person that may fit in to that job, and has got that background, I'm gonna call you or one of your people that you designate. That's all I'm asking.
Well, and I-
We, we do the same thing for everybody else, police department, fire department. Uh, and why shouldn't we do it? Get the information from those that we're giving money to.
One of the things I will tell you is, is in a few minutes, we'll talk about the Workforce Coordinator Program, and so that person on our team, and they, every week, we call all of our targeted sector businesses, and so all of those that qualify for state and local incentives that you're providing a benefit to. Um, and we get from them their current weekly openings, um, and then if there are any changes from previous weeks, if it's a new position, we get their job description. We provide that to two hundred people in our workforce partner network every week. So all of those agencies, all of those entities are supposed to be referring every week to these companies to fill these openings. And if they say they referred someone, then we follow up with the company saying, did you, were they qualified? If they're qualified, did you interview them? If you interviewed them, were they hired? If they were not hired, why not? So we can go back to the referring entity and let them know why they weren't hired. So if it's a training issue, if it's an education issue, that can be remediated, and the person would then be available for the next. So that's the system that we're building, um, with that Workforce Coordinator Program.
I have no problem, as long as, uh, we're getting Bowling Green, Warren County people jobs, that meet the need.
Can I comment or question? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen, two fifty-two.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Kobe Aluminum Automotive Products LLC.
So moved.
Second. Perigin, second by Nash. We just heard the explanation on Kobe, is any other comments or questions? Are there?
I have one, Bruce. I, I think it's really important to note that after the ten years, we get the one point eight percent, so it's, it's just a, it's a short-term thing.
Plus, if the jobs don't come, they don't get the incentive.
Thank you, yeah. If, if they don't realize what they say they're gonna realize, then they don't get the incentive, yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order two thousand seventeen, two fifty-three.
Municipal order approving amended and restated workforce agreement between the city of Bowling Green and South Central Kentucky Works Incorporated.
Second.
Nash, second.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, flowing from Joe's questions, uh, I thought it'd be important for Meredith to come up and explain number seven and eight on your agenda. As we know, we have six thousand, uh, current openings. Uh, we've recreated the whole delivery process, or are in the process of doing so, but doesn't immune the city from doing more. For the last two years, we've been, uh, using, uh, special funds to try to target specific businesses in our community to help create, uh, more jobs and to close that gap. So item seven and eight relate to that.
Did I take what you, what you were supposed to say?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, one, there are sort of two components here, and so, as you guys are well aware, several years ago, we had a very sort of public workforce fight locally, um, for the good of the community, to make sure that the companies that we have here have the workforce that they need, um, that they are educated and trained to take those positions, and that we continue to be the fastest-growing city in the state of Kentucky. Um, along those lines, um, obviously that requires a major cultural shift among several of our, um, public workforce partners. And so we've had sort of a two-pronged approach. One was the Workforce Coordinator piece, which I talked about briefly just a minute ago, of having somebody that's constantly, every week, in their face, getting the information and sharing it with them, so there's no excuses. And then they, the referring partners have to report back every week how many they're referring. Um, we went from none to now, on good weeks, we have seventy to eighty referrals. There's still a lot of work to do in that space, because obviously you can't fill six thousand open positions at a rate of seventy referrals a week. Um, the odds are, all of those referrals aren't necessarily gonna be qualified and get hired. So we're still working on that to build velocity in the system, um, but I will, um, one, thank you for being, um, sort of visionary on that process. We are touted by the state as the place in Kentucky that is doing workforce right. Um, and while we've had sort of minimal success by sort of our standards as a high, um, growth, uh, community, this is the model that the state is looking at for how to do this and how do we scale this. Um, on the SCK Works portion, what that funding is used for is the national consultant, um, Lori Strumpf with Strumpf and Associates, that we bring in to help build that partner network. Um, so in the We O' A Law, they're required, there are about fifteen to nineteen federal programs that funnel money into the workforce system. Locally, those programs are administered by about eight or nine different entities, and so bringing them all together, convening them on a regular basis to talk through how they best work together. One of the things we're also working on is building a brand-new one-stop, um, career center in Bowling Green. So for the first time ever, having a facility where they are all truly co-located, where a person can walk in as a job seeker, regardless of what program that they qualify for, they're all right there in one spot. They can get assessed, they can get trained, and they can get placed. And so, obviously, our focus is on how can we do this most quickly and most efficiently to ensure the success of our, um, companies? The other component of the Workforce Coordinator piece is external relationships. Um, we've been working very closely with Fort Campbell, trying to recruit separating soldiers out of there. Um, we've worked very closely with Brent and with Leida Becker on your team, who have been amazing, helping us get in, um, contact with the leadership of our international communities, so that we can do a better job of assessing where are their barriers and how do we get them placed? And then we physically don't have the numbers to fill all the jobs, and so how do we do an external recruitment to get people to move to Bowling Green? Um, and that's something that we're pushing on, the state as a whole, to do a massive campaign as a state, um, to get people to move to Kentucky and take the positions that we have available. So, yes, sir?
Maybe you could differentiate, uh, the focus of the two pots of money, uh, that-
So with SCK Works, like I said, that's the national consultant focusing on the partnering, making sure that all those agencies that are supposed to work together truly are working together, and they're working together to maximize the benefit to our community. If you look at all those different programs, all those different pools of money, that's a ten million dollar impact on our community annually. Between all of them, they get ten million dollars. And so are we maximizing that money? And then the Workforce Coordinator is that internal piece to the chamber, where we're actively contacting all of those targeted business companies, getting their direct need, and pushing on the system to get those positions filled.
Just for sake of disclosure, I'm on the, uh, the first board, the Sky Works Board, so.
Other comments or questions? Appreciate the hard work, it needs a lot, lot to do, and keep going. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order two thousand seventeen, two fifty-four.
Municipal order approving amended and restated Workforce Coordinator Agreement among the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, and Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Williams. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order two thousand seventeen, two fifty-five.
Municipal order authorizing and approving consent to sale of property located at three oh one State Street and four fifteen East Third Avenue by the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
Oops.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a while back, uh, we owned three oh one State Street, and as part of our economic development efforts in the downtown, we, uh, gave that property to the Bowling Green Housing Authority for them to rehab it and to put it back into use. They have done so, and they're interested now in selling it. Part of our wraparound agreement requires the commission to give its consent, uh, for permission to sell. If you look in your packet, uh, there is a letter from a man who's very passionate about continuing, uh, cutting hair in downtown Bowling Green, so we wanted to honor that, and I put that in the packet. Uh, Katie Miller's here from the Bowling Green Housing Authority, staff has looked at this, and we support it, and, uh-
Brent's here, if you have any questions.
Katie, please come forward, please.
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, or left. What is it being sold for?
It's being sold for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That includes the building and the lot next to it.
One that is paved behind the section there?
Yes, sir, and there is a, the, that lot, there's an alley that kinda runs behind that, um, parking lot, so it includes that lot as well.
Hee room lot?
Yes, sir, that's what I heard it was.
Was?
Before my time.
Way before your time?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
You weren't thought of?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order two thousand seventeen, two fifty-six.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of two thousand eighteen grant funds from the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area through the Office of National Drug Control Policy in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars.
Second.
This is the yearly grant. As the commission knows, uh, we partner with, with the county to, uh, run, uh, a drug task force. We get incented, uh, through this program to help with the cost of overtime. Uh, we're here tonight to, uh, hopefully accept thirty-six thousand dollars to help cover the overtime it takes to participate in the drug task force. Doug is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand seventeen, fifty-eight.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to repeal concealed carry requirements for the city, city facilities, and language establishing hourly max, maximum hourly rates for outside legal services.
So moved.
Second.
Williams, second by Perigin. Mr. DeFabo?
I think you're the sponsor, I, I can take care of the one-house key me item, uh, which involves the, uh, uh, you, giving me the authority to establish and to hire outside counsel. We, as we talked about at the retreat, we wanted to, uh, extend my authority to, uh, apply a special counsel rate. The current rate was too low, we had to come to you all the time to amend it, so this would give me a discretion. Hopefully I'll use good discretion, and I'm responsible to free, to you if I don't, so, uh, we support this. The concealed carry, I'll defer to you, Mayor.
You're asking for a question? We giving you, giving the authority to negotiate, uh, hourly legal fees? Is that what this is saying?
Yes.
Five hundred dollars an hour based on the area that we're pursuing? You bring that back to us, and we approve or deny?
If it's a certain amount, he has authority to spend a certain amount- Twenty-five thousand, correct? It would have to be-
Which is what you've got now?
Right, yeah. I would show, I think this, this was a suggestion by the commission, uh, I would show good discretion. The current amount was just way too low, and we couldn't do anything, and it was-
I agree with you there.
The current hourly weight-
Right.
-rate was way too low.
Right.
The total amount remains the same.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand is still, nothing different.
But you could negotiate any hourly rate you wanted.
Based on what?
Provided it didn't exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for whatever, whatever the issue was that was being dealt with.
That issue would have been vetted with you already. It's more of a housekeeping item.
I'm gonna write that down, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, it still needs to follow the normal procurement rules that we already have.
Second item was brought to the city staff, uh, about the carry concealed issue under, maybe you can explain it better, under Kentucky's constitution, what authority we have and do not have.
So under Kentucky constitution, and particularly with statutory language now, there's a new statute adopted, Katie, three years ago, or time flies, where the state came in a general assembly and adopted even more stringent language, basically. Uh, that really tied the hands of cities and counties to regulate, um, almost anything dealing with guns and weapons. Uh, if you may recall, even at that time, we went through our Code of Ordinances, I guess, almost line by line, uh, to remove, I think one time we had language that you couldn't carry a weapon into the cemetery by Code of Ordinances. We had to remove that language. Uh, I think I, uh, met with Brent Belcher, uh, and after reading a couple of his, um, you know, signs in front of some of his buildings that had no weapon language, and remind him, by the way, you have to remove that language, uh, because that conflicted with that statute. However, there's always, not always, but for several years, there's been one exception, uh, that cities were authorized to do. Uh, and that was to adopt, uh, an ordinance that prohibited, uh, the carrying of concealed weapons inside city buildings, as long as we designated those buildings on the, on the doors coming in with language that said, no concealed weapons are allowed in this building. You know, that statute had very little teeth to it, there was no legal penalties to it. If somebody did violate it, uh, the only thing we could do was to ask them to leave the building. If they didn't leave the building, then we could call the police and maybe do something about trespass, but there were no legal, um, criminal penalties for somebody violating that. Uh, and as I think I've already talked to two or three of you, regardless of the concealed carry language, uh, you know, I think most people would agree, I think KLC does, and most city attorneys do as well, that regardless of that language, the city has no ability to prohibit the carrying of open guns in any of its facilities, or in any of its parks. Uh, in fact, we couldn't, we couldn't prevent concealed carry in parks. The only place we could prohibit concealed carry was in buildings that were designated with writing. But we could not prevent the open carry of weapons in any city buildings at all. You know, I can't, Katie may remember, I can't remember how many years we've had this ordinance on the books, quite a few, several years. Uh, I don't have any recollection that we've ever enforced this ordinance. You know, maybe one reason why if people are carrying something concealed, we don't see it. But, um, uh, and, and we've had questions, I've had questions in the past from some of the department heads about, you know, city employees, um, and I've given them the same opinion that probably under existing law in Kentucky, city employees have the ability to carry open weapons, um, inside city facilities, uh, inside fire trucks, uh, and just about anyplace else that they chose to carry, uh, open weapons. Um, so given that, and I'll, I'll defer to the mayor, since he's the sponsor of this, but again, I don't recall us ever enforcing this ordinance. Uh, I had, um, you know, Commissioner Nash asked me a day or so ago, was that meaning that, you know, people can carry an open guns to a city commission meeting? The answer is, yes, they can, and they have. Uh, not very often, but they have once or twice, in, in my memory, I've been here, and there's not anything that we can do about that. So, I mean, you know, given the fact that the ordinance has, you know, little penalties, little or no penalties, we've never enforced it, to my knowledge, and go back to what I said a minute ago, if we did see somebody with concealed carry and we asked them to leave, they have every ability to say, you know, if it's under a jacket, just simply say, "Well, I'll take my jacket off, and I'll walk into the building with it open," and we can't stop them.
We had a situation here a few years ago before we died. Joe Garman was sitting there in the third row, and Joe Garman has carried a gun all his life, even when he was in the crib as a baby, forty-five. Carried it all his life, all over Bowling Green. Everybody tried to get him in a spot where they could arrest him, and he was sitting right there in that third row on the right side, gun chewing, and we asked him to, if you didn't mind, go outside, take it off. He did, came back in. So, we're saying now that a person that has a concealed carry permit from the Commonwealth of Kentucky can wear their gun in here.
Yes, if this passes, we would go through the existing city buildings that have the language on the door, and we would take that language off the doors. That then would allow anyone who is legally allowed to carry a concealed weapon, to carry now concealed weapons inside city buildings, including here.
And if that person has a gun on that is not concealed, they still can come in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next question. And I'm going to ask, this is a Brent. Brent, you have a lady that retired or transferred from the police department to dog catching.
Animal control officer, yes, sir. She transferred and started yesterday.
That's close.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say that person has a concealed carry permit, or one of the licenses that says this person can carry a gun anywhere in the world, and that state and those police agencies have to acknowledge that gun. Could she do that and be a dog catcher and have her gun on?
Yes.
Good.
Depending on how the weapon is secured, she would still be responsible. She is not required nor expected to carry a weapon to be an animal control officer for the city of Bowling Green, nor is a code enforcement inspector or housing receptionist or a building inspector expected to or required to carry a firearm during the course of their business.
If she wanted to.
She would be responsible for it.
The type of dogs and stuff she has to encounter, she can have a gun on.
If this ordinance passes, she would have the ability to carry that firearm, in my understanding, she would have the ability to carry that firearm concealed if she had the proper license, because she is no longer a police officer, so she doesn't fall under the, the police officer part of it, if she had the proper license, or they could open carry, which is already allowed in Kentucky, but they are not expected nor required to as part of their job for the city of Bowling Green.
Commissioner, take one step further. If this passes, she would be allowed to carry that concealed weapon inside the work building. She already has the legal authority to carry that concealed weapon outside. I mean, if she wanted to carry one while visiting homes, or looking, trying to find a dog loose or anything else, she already has that authority.
I like that. I'd like for her or him or whoever's there to have that authority.
One more clarification, too, if you don't mind. This, this would not affect the Kentucky statute as it relates to the police department.
The chief, I think the chief's here and I, the chief and I both have read that statute, I think you gave us a reference. I think we are not either one real sure that that statute's applicable to police departments. It's, it's applicable to detention facilities, but our police department's not a detention facility. But obviously, if people have concealed carry licenses, they will not be able to carry into locations that are prohibited by law from carrying them. For example, if one of our animal wardens had a concealed carry, they would not be allowed to carry it into the justice center or into the jail, or I guess schools have some requirements, too. And this is not just a, you know, we'll be talking about something else in a few minutes. This is not just an issue here. Other cities have looked at this. I think Jason's not here, I think, right now, but I think we've heard from some of the fire departments, you know, particularly Louisville, Lexington, maybe, I'm sure which one, that they had firefighters carrying weapons on fire trucks, and they actually put in the fire trucks, some of the fire trucks, I guess, little small gun lock cabinets, or not really a cabinet, but a box. So, if they were required to go into a school or someplace like that where they couldn't carry the gun, they were required to actually lock the gun up in that box when they went somewhere they could not legally carry the weapon.
What was the, what was the original question?
I think the question was, will they still be able to carry in the police departments? And I think Doug and I both think that they can carry in the police department. We think that statute's applicable to detention facilities, and our jail, our police department's not a detention center. But we'll look at that one again, but our reading of that statute, that's, that's what we think.
Well, and, and I think you'll find in most cases, the people who are legally qualified under training and have been issued a concealed carry permit through the state of Kentucky, you probably don't have to worry much about those people anyway.
And I'm not sure I'm worried about the police department, because other people, they'll have guns, too.
Yeah.
Come answer your questions, yes, sir.
So, the, the question is not whether or not somebody can bring a gun into city buildings. That's already established that if, as of today, if nothing changed, you could carry a firearm into a city building provided it was open carried.
Yes, sir.
The decision that we're making tonight is whether or not we prefer somebody to open carry or conceal carry and allow that to go on.
Well, I think the question for you tonight is, right now, we have an ordinance that prohibits the concealed carry into designated buildings that have been designated that you cannot carry into. I think the question for you tonight is, do you want to continue that ordinance prohibition about allowing people to carry concealed weapons into designated buildings? And I don't know how many times I've been asked a question, probably the last five years, that, well, we got a complaint at a Little League ballgame that somebody there with a, with a gun, concealed or open, either one, you know, can't we stop that? My answer always has been, no, concealed or open either one. Really, not same issue as this, but, you know, I think a lot of people are surprised that people can carry either concealed or open weapons into a lot of places here in Kentucky, including parks and doing ball events and everything else. I think the only issue here is, does the city still want to keep the language that we have in the code of ordinances now that prohibits the carrying of concealed weapons in certain buildings? But you, back to your first question, we have no ability to prevent anybody from carrying an open gun into this building, city annex, public works building, or any other city building.
It's interesting to me that the Kentucky legislature is who created this ability to, to, to carry in this way, and, and do you know where you can't carry a concealed or an open carry weapon? In, in, in those chambers.
In where?
In the Kentucky State House. So, they're, they're very comfortable with putting local legislators who have a great deal more contact, one-on-one, with the very public that were elected to serve, okay with putting those legislators in a position where they have to confront people in a room like this with a firearm, but those same Kentucky legislators see fit to ensure that they don't have to encounter the same things. A few years ago, when I was, when I had the privilege of serving on the, the city commission, we were taking considerable steps here at city hall to ensure the safety of employees. When I was, when I was off the commission for four years, there was a great deal of work that took place in this very building on the second floor to ensure that somebody couldn't go over a counter after somebody who was, who they were upset with. It seems to fly in the face of the discussion that we were having then, that we're now going to allow people to come into the building and, and have a gun on them, and we don't know it. I realize that, I understand, and I can't dispute the argument, that if somebody wants to carry a gun on them, they're probably going to carry a gun on them, and that a sign isn't going to stop them from doing so. It, it seems to me to be an issue about encouragement or agreement to, to allow that to take place. In, in, in our public buildings, we have a lot of really heated discussions or conversations where people have considerable disagreement, and I think the idea that we're sending a message to somebody that you can secretly carry a gun in to a building is, is sending the, the wrong message. It would be my preference that, that they openly carry their weapon. At least then, we're able to easily identify those people who are going to possess the greatest threat. If only a few years ago, we were worried about somebody climbing over a counter and physically assaulting someone, to a few years later, we're not concerned about somebody hiding a gun in their jacket that can shoot some, they don't have to climb over the counter anymore, they can just shoot them from one side of the counter to the other if they so choose, just seems to, to fly in the face of, of protection of not only ourselves as legislators, but our responsibility to protect city employees. You can't carry a weapon in a federal court facility, you can't carry a weapon in a United States post office, you can't carry a weapon at a ranger station or a visitor center in a national or state park, and you can't carry a weapon at a national cemetery or on an aircraft, but we're going to allow people to carry a weapon into a room where we discuss hotly debated issues like the fairness ordinance. That just doesn't seem to, to me to, to, to be acting in the best interest of, of those that we serve and those who work for the city who we have a responsibility to protect. I don't have anything else unless somebody has questions for me.
And I am certainly the one that proposed the security system we've got now, and you are exactly right. I'll have to propose another one where we put steel doors up, I guess, and nobody can see in, no one can see out, but I thought it was a pretty good idea at the time. Can we take a listen, let's think a while?
First reading, the second reading.
Well, he's thinking, may I ask an additional question? Why these two items were couched together? Because on one item, on, on the ordinance related to the legal fees, I'm in support. Related to concealed carry, I'm not. They seem like wildly different issues to me. I understand that they most, they, they both fall under the same chapter, and, and maybe that's why it was couched together, but it would be...
It was, Commissioner, just because we're doing chapter two.
It would just be my preference that because they're such different issues, that they be uncouched, if that is a word from one another.
Do we have to vote on it tonight?
Yeah, but it doesn't count.
You don't have to vote on it. If you want to propose to put it on the table, then we would have a vote on it.
I need to think a while on it, because I raised, I had criticism for suggesting that we put buzzers and locks on doors. Wes wasn't here, were you here then, Wes? So, I can't blame you. I was... I'm going to vote no on it tonight. I want to think about it, because I thought when I made the motion at that particular time, it was an excellent motion. I took the heat for it, for the $80,000, and I was thinking out, thanking for the employees who sit behind these desks, and at that time, a person could walk through the front door, walk right straight out of the back door, and all around in the back parking lot, no one may have even noticed the person coming through the building. Second of all, that same person could walk into Katie's office, two offices back from the entrance here, city manager's office, Kim's office, and do the same thing by walking up these steps here, going into offices over here on the right. And I'm not going back down for having done that. It was right. I took the heat for it. No one's been hurt.
Come answer your questions.
Well, the only thing that, that I'd say, voting yes or no on the issue is not going to change the fact that state law says that you can openly carry.
And I, and I have no problem with that.
So, you know, it's, people can do that now, and the only ones who are actually violating the law of any kind are people who don't have a concealed carry permit. They're carrying illegally to begin with, and all you can do then is ask them to leave. It's the only recourse.
All the roll?
Are we voting on this right now?
Yes. And the first vote, of course, doesn't count.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
No.
Nash?
No.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-257.
Municipal Order Approving the Purchase of 750 Pearl Street from Marjory F. Ayers and Authorizing the Mayor and Other Authorized City Officials to Execute the Deed and All Other Necessary Documents.
So moved.
Second. By Denning, second by Nash. I believe this was the item that we talked about last at the public session.
On the will of the board, we took his request and your approval and, and put it here tonight.
One, one, I do have one update, though. The day after we did this, Mr. Ayers contacted me and provided documentation that he did have a real estate person helping him sell this, and there was a real estate commission fee, so he asked if we could up this by 10% from 6,100 to 6,710, and given your all's discussion two weeks ago, I didn't see a problem with that. So, that's what the deed is now for 6,710.
Please, please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
William, Wilkerson?
Yes.
Late file is the first reading of ordinance BG 2017-59.
Ordinance Annuating Property by Consent. Ordinance Annuating 38.21 Acres of Property Located at Zero Moorhead Road in Greystone Subdivision, Presently Owned by Greystone Properties Incorporated, With Said Territory Being Contiguous to Existing City Limits. So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams.
I'm going to have Brent, if with your acquiescence, have Brent Childers explain this to the commission. Is that okay? Brent?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, Commissioner, it's a pleasure to be back before you again. Tonight's annexation, while simple, has a lot of complexities to it based on timing. So, that's for the desire for the late file and some other changes in schedule to, to keep this moving forward. So, currently, what you have before you is the annexation of a single tract of property, 38.21 acres, that is currently being developed into Phase 16, or a portion of this property is being currently developed into Phase 16 of Greystone Subdivision. Greystone Subdivision Phases 1 through 15 are all located within the city limits of Bowling Green. This tract of land that adjoins it and will be the next phase is currently not located in the city limits of Bowling Green. There is a binding element as part of this that required the developer to seek annexation before recording of the plat. The terminology used there is very important. This came up last week. We got the consent form drafted, sent to the developer, signed and returned. Rob started his work on drawing everything that you have before you. Should look something like this, showing the 38.21 acres as one single tract of property. The reason I draw influence to the word "seek" is, once the plat is recorded, that single tract of property that is 38.21 acres turns into somewhere in the neighborhood of, I haven't counted all the lots, but I'm going to estimate around 60 lots that will then, that can then be sold because they are lots of record, because they are platted lots. So, in an effort to make this annexation as simple as possible, we wanted to go ahead and annex a single tract of property as opposed to going and tracking down the property owners of 60 lots, once this plat is recorded, which we assume would be a combination of home builders, with then having the issue related to of having all of them say, "Yes, I agree," and not having one street in or every other house in or whatever. That's why we were asking to go ahead and move this forward, get this going, so while it is still a single tract of property, get it annexed, get it into the city limits of Bowling Green, and then it can be parceled out into about 50 to 60 lots to be built on. So, I'll, I'll entertain any questions. Gene, you got anything to add?
Just the only other thing requiring, I guess, even more in particular hurry, we understand that the developer of the subdivision is intending to start selling lots, and as in the next... the next few days. So that's what's causing one of the, I guess, rushes to get this done, because as Brent said, we don't want to be dealing with multiple property owners out there and require consents and everything else. We thought we need to get done all in one swoop while it's owned by one person.
So it's our... It's the intent tonight that if this were to pass, that we would have a second reading on this. When?
Tomorrow at 3:30.
Tomorrow at 3:30.
The special call notice went out this afternoon.
Just want to ensure that the public was aware of that.
It... Yes.
Comment your questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Greg.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Sorry.
What, do you want me to vote again?
Yeah. I'm sorry. It's plain as day.
All right. The next item we have is a work session regarding panhandling, begging, charitable, and political solicitation.
I can give an intro. At our last retreat, there was some discussion by the commission about this emergent issue in our community, which is complicated by federal and legal precedent. Gene has been working with Amy and others to put together what could be a solution to this problem here, and we thought it'd be important to have a work session to go over those items. Gene?
I'll try to move as quickly as I can, if I know everybody needs to go and get out. And I'm not used to sitting, standing here, so maybe a little bit different form as well. But as Kevin said, right now, we have two separate ordinances that deal with solicitations, specifically panhandling type of solicitations. The draft I have done will do away with both of those and combine this into one new subchapter in Chapter Nine, dealing with not just panhandling, but to make this maybe more legally secure, we'll pick up all forms of solicitation, including political, charitable, and everything else. I think that's where most of the case law now is coming on, just like the case we talked to you about, about signs, is if you want to pass legal muster, you need to make this applicable to all types of solicitation. Because if you, you know, if you have to listen to what the person is asking to know if it's illegal or not, probably most of the courts are going to say your ordinance is illegal as well, too. So that's what we're trying to do. Most of the draft, and I'll give credit where it's due, most of the draft document came from a draft ordinance that was prepared by someone on behalf of the International Municipal Lawyers Association. They had a conference a few weeks ago, and this draft ordinance was discussed. They actually had a panel on it. This one was discussed. I've made some changes in that, in the model ordinance, but a lot of this came from that model ordinance. You know, I'm sure you don't really care, but this is, you know, talking about it kind of like guns, too. Talking about a hotly contested issue. Just Google. Go out and Google "panhandling" and see, you know, how many thousands of hits you get immediately about cities adopting ordinances, cities amending ordinances. I think a lot of cities are now facing the same issue that we're facing. Lexington's ordinance got struck down by U.S. Federal Court a few months ago. So a lot of cities are now dealing with this to try to come up with some language they think will pass that. And it said, "Mingo," the one I drafted, picks up not just panhandling, but picks up all forms of solicitation, charitable and political as well. One thing that we did do, you know, always before, we had an aggressive one, aggressive panhandling. We kept that language. I think the definition's changed a little bit. We'll go over that in a little bit more detail. But we basically said aggressive panhandling is going to be illegal anywhere and everywhere in the city of Bowling Green. On the other hand of that, if it's not aggressive panhandling, then under our definition, basically it's passive panhandling or passive solicitation. And, you know, obviously, I think everybody now, most courts now agree that solicitation, panhandling, is a constitutional First Amendment right. So we are going to, we've got language of ordinance recognizing, acknowledging the right, the First Amendment right of people to solicit, but we're trying to, at least in passive solicitation, we're saying, "Okay, passive solicitation will be okay, but we're going to put some conditions on where you can do that as well, too." And we'll talk about that in just a minute as well. Want to make sure everybody's aware that this does not address door-to-door solicitation of people's houses. We've already got that covered under other things with our transient business licenses and stuff like this. So this is not intended to handle that. We've already got that covered someplace else. One thing Commissioner Nash at one time mentioned, a permitting process. While I'll talk more in detail about it, but I did put one in, and we'll get to it. I try to make it as maybe as unintrusive as possible, again, with the hope that if challenged, that it will be upheld, too. And we'll talk again, more details about that as well, too. But I did put in a permitting process. Kind of my last note before we get to this is a reminder that this is a draft ordinance only. This is something I've put together. Any comments, suggestions, concerns that the Board of Commissioners has, you know, I'll be glad to go back and try to answer your questions if you got them, or go back and make changes if people think we need to make changes in it. You know, again, this is just kind of like my work product right now and open to any comments that you guys may have. All right. Like I said, the first section in 941 deals with the definitions. Again, the first one's aggressive soliciting for charitable or political purposes, begging or panhandling. And these are kind of, this page and next, list about seven or eight things that we, under this ordinance, that we will classify as aggressive panhandling or aggressive solicitation. Probably need to keep using the word "solicitation," since it's going to pick up more than just panhandling. But again, confronting someone in a way that causes a reasonable person to feel bodily harm, accosting or approaching or speaking in such manner to cause a reasonable person to feel imminent body harm, touching someone without their consent, using obscene or abusive language while attempting to panhandle or solicit, forcing one another by continuing to solicit in close proximity, particularly after you've got a negative response, somebody comes up, you say, "Now, I'm not interested." They continue to stand in your way, continue to demand money or ask for money, or do whatever else type of solicitation they're trying to do. Again, acting with the intent to intimidate someone to give them money, or other conduct that a reasonable person would regard as threatening or intimidating in order to solicit a contribution or donation. So when we get to it, you know, that definition of aggressive panhandling, any of those type of actions are going to be prohibited, period. You know, if it's aggressive panhandling, that's going to be a violation of this ordinance and subject to the penalties, whatever we decide those penalties may be. The second part of definitions, we're going to talk about a couple of areas. We'll talk about areas with heightened personal security, and we'll talk about a couple more. When we get to the next part, where we're going to say, "Okay, you can do passive." Passive solicitation is basically anything that's not aggressive. You know, anything that's not prohibited, you will be allowed to do. But we're also going to say, "But you can do that only in certain areas." Or maybe the reverse, there are certain areas that you cannot do passive solicitation in as well. You can't do aggressive anyplace. Passive, there are certain locations that we're going to say you can't do, too. Now, first one is areas with heightened personal security concerns, within 20 feet of a public parking garage, 20 feet of a public bus stop, a public transit entrance, 20 feet of access to building entrances, public events, venues, public accommodations, commercial businesses, again, where a person would have a reasonable or justified concern for their security. And again, kind of a catch-all, any other place kind of which congestion where a reasonable person would justify a fear of their personal security due congestion in close proximity to others. You know, that one's a little bit open-ended, but again, like parades, some of the other events that we have, a lot of people congregated together, where you may not feel comfortable if somebody trying to solicit, you know, it's going to fall under that catch-all. A second area, when we get to passive, where they cannot do passive solicitation, is areas with heightened personal privacy concerns, again, within 20 feet of an automatic teller machine. I'm not sure anybody wants somebody standing behind them while you're taking money out of the, out of the bank machines. I mean, I'm pretty bad even driving up to one. You know, a lot of times, I don't feel real comfortable when I have somebody come in real close behind me in one of those. But we said, again, within 20 feet of a teller machine, within 20 feet of a sidewalk cafe while the cafe is open, within 20 feet of any school building or school grounds when the school's in session, again, 20 feet of an entrance to any public restroom, or on any private property, when a person asks you to leave and you failed to leave. That can be picked up under personal privacy concerns as well, too. The third one area that we're saying even passive solicitation that we cannot do is areas with heightened public safety concerns. This one's a little bit different from the model ordinance. That one, the model ordinance, actually specified some particular intersections. I thought I didn't want to do that, because I'm not sure, you know, how am I ever going to identify which intersections are safer than others? I'm not sure any intersection is safe when people are moving around. If you're like me, you know, every time a light turns green now, I'll wait like two or three seconds to look left and right, to make sure nobody's coming, to make sure somebody's not running a red light to start with. So I'm not sure which intersections we'd ever go designate. Oh, this one's okay, this one's not. So in the draft I did, I didn't make that distinction. Basically, it said includes the traffic or travel lane of any public streets or highways open to vehicular traffic in the city, and the medians. You know, we have some intersections that have medians, and I don't think we want people standing out in the median soliciting. So we put that in as well, too. Next couple of these, we'll go through real quick. We had defined passive panhandling, begging, charitable stuff. That's basically anything that's not aggressive, either holding up a sign, verbally asking for money, as long as you're not falling into aggressive panhandling or aggressive solicitation, then you're going to be passive, and that's where it is.
Question on you. Back one slide. That... They'll include the traffic or travel lane. Does that include any of the right-of-way? Because what you generally see is somebody standing with a sign, and then they run out into traffic and then run back in there.
I think if they run into a traffic, then they violate this. And I do not pick up sidewalks or the other things. If you notice this, this is the traveled portion of them.
When I'm talking about sidewalks, I'm talking about standing on the side of the road. I think where I've gotten the most complaints in the last few months is standing there at the off-ramp on I-65, which is there, you know, clearly right there by the guardrail. In my mind, that's part of the travel lane. I don't know that that's specific enough.
I think a couple of things. I can define this, maybe go further. Clearly, I do not want to include sidewalks, because I think sidewalks are clearly open to solicitation. So I didn't want to go quite that far. I know we've had issues, not really issues, but questions in the past about the green areas of right-of-way, even with union activities and stuff like that, about our ability to prevent people from, I guess, doing First Amendment things in the untraveled portions. I would tell you, my draft here basically says the traveled portions. Go back to your thing, though. Even if they're standing there, they can't get any type of solicitation or donation unless they run into a traffic lane to get it. So if they run into a traffic lane to get it, then they violate this ordinance. But them simply being there, probably under this language, it does not. But I can look into that to try to expand it. I guess the question is, you know, how far to expand. Still, I guess I could put it in, expand it to the right-of-way, maybe not including the sidewalks, because a lot of times sidewalks are in the right-of-ways, too. But I guess I could go, if there's some interest in doing that. I could expand it to any portion of the right-of-way, you know, with the exception of sidewalks, perhaps, I could do that. But again, you go back to your question, even if they're standing there, they can't get anything unless they actually go into the traveled portion. Of course, they're still standing there.
True, because they could... Traffic can be queued up on the open road. They could be on the berm, so to speak, and lean into a window.
I still think if they did that, that would violate what I have now, because they're still taking it from someone in a traveled portion.
Take it from someone.
Yes. Yes. But I can, Mayor, I have no problem. I can look into maybe expanding that area a little wider.
Cutters, shoulders, I mean, you know, I think I would look at the traffic manual and come up with all the various terms that are used and see if we can include those as well.
Well, that'd be certainly, I can certainly look into doing that, with the exception, like I said, I do want to not conclude sidewalk, because that's always been such a traditional First Amendment area, and most of our sidewalks are in the right-of-way. So I'll come up with a broader, yes, sir, lesser, in fact, but I'll do that, Mayor. Okay. Again, the definition of charitable, basically just asking for anything, including selling things, something for less than its, you know, for more than its value, or people clearly understand that they're paying for something more than it's worth. But again, that's just the definition of soliciting. Again, 942 is where we come back in and say, you know, we go back to our eight things you can't do to be aggressive. This one says that no person shall engage in aggressive solicitation for charitable or political purposes, begging or panhandling at any time or any location in the city. So if it's aggressive, it's just prohibited. But now we get into passive. You know, if I use the first couple of paragraphs, and maybe I didn't need to, but put in the first couple of paragraphs to say, you know, acknowledgement and findings by the Board of Commissioners that you recognize the First Amendment rights of people to solicit. Followed by the second one, though, but highways and streets really aren't a place for this because of safety concerns, people, like you said, running in our traffic. You know, the purpose of highways is to drive cars off and on. It's not for people to run out and get things from occupants of the car. But these are just kind of findings that I put in the ordinance as well, too. Again, the traffic or travel lanes and those medians are not designed for, not appropriate location for anything other than travel. And then kind of the last finding that even though we may have prohibited certain places for passive, there's still lots of other places in the city that people can. This doesn't prevent people from soliciting everywhere. There's still going to be lots of places that they can. And I just put this language in, kind of acknowledging the finding that, from the Board, that there are lots of places out there. Again, 943, passive panhandling, begging, charitable, political solicitation is prohibited in areas defined as those with personal security concerns that we defined, and areas with heightened personal privacy concerns that we defined. The second one goes in, talks about the safety issues that's prohibited there. I do want to note, if you didn't pick it up at the end, which are also prohibited by both the solicitor and the occupant. So I put language in here that if somebody doesn't comply with this, that the violation can be against not only the person who solicits that, whatever they want from the person in the car, but the person in the car giving it will also be in violation of this ordinance as well, because this is a two-way street. They won't do it if people give or don't give. So at least this language right now, again, open to comments from y'all or suggestions, but the language right now that giving and receiving will both be a violation of this ordinance. And then 944 is the permit. Again, I'm trying to make it fairly unintrusive if I could. I know one of the things we talked about was some of the people are in this for business. So I kind of took that at heart and said kind of the same thing, that, well, if you're in for a business, then we probably need to permit you. If you truly are somebody traveling through the town, and you've heard them like me, I don't know how many times I've been approached, you know, "My car broke down, I'm out of gas. Can you give me money?" You know, if somebody truly does happen like that, and they're here for a day doing it, it's probably unreasonable to expect them to come in and get a permit if you are here for a day or so, and they truly are in need of something so they can, you know, fix their car or whatever, get gas and get out of town. So I came up with the five days. It basically says that if you're going to engage in passive panhandling or solicitation in a public for a period of more than five days a year, then you've got to go to the police department and get a permit. I didn't put a whole lot of stuff in a permit. I didn't put any requirements that they do a criminal history background, because I felt a little bit uncomfortable that, well, just because you have a criminal record doesn't mean that you can't solicit like everybody else does. So I didn't put that in, but again, a lot of stuff's open to whatever you guys may want, too. I also didn't put a fee in with the idea that, you know, a fee might be challenged because if you are truly needy, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to make you pay for a permit when you truly are needy. Yes, sir.
How do we enforce five days? How do we know if an individual's been here an hour or five days?
I thought that as well, and that won't be the easy thing, but I think, the only thing I could thought of when I did this was police officers making the rounds, noticing people that, by notice, this person's been here seven days ago, you know, that probably it's going to be the police officers who are going to be seeing these people on a routine basis. And what I liken it to, when I thought about that, was the requirement, if I move here from Tennessee, I've got to change my license tags, that the police officer's noticing there may be a car here, continue with Tennessee tags, and finally making the connection, you've got to get your tags changed. But I thought about that question as well, Commissioner, about, but the only thing I could think of, I think it would have to be up to police officers, who are out on the street, who see these people, who probably recognize these people, that finally catch on that, you know, "Gosh, this person's been here seven or eight days. I'm going to check to see if they got a permit."
But even if the person, but if the person doesn't have a permit, I like your thinking, so that please don't assume this is a personal attack or an attack on the ordinance. Even if the person doesn't have a permit, and the police officer were to say, "Hey, you've been here for seven days," and that person says, "No, I haven't," there's really no way to dispute that.
Well, I still think the police...
We have three police officers in the room. I don't know if any of them would want to weigh into that, but I mean, I just, if, and two on the board, I don't know how we get into the, away from the he said, she said, "No, I wasn't here, yes, I was, no, you weren't."
But I think that's the same issue of police officers. Well, I think that may be the same issue of police officers facing a lot of things about, well, the light was green, no, it was red. You know, it's, well, I saw it green, no, it was, it was red. But I still think, and we got the sheet behind me, but, you know, I think if, you know, I think that officer still be able to go into district court and say, you know, I worked this date, this date, this date, this date, you know, I saw this person this date, this date, this date, this date. But I, but again, the five days is something I came up with just to, you know, maybe make it more business-oriented, but I also did think of that concern about how they'd be able to do that. But I think police officers would still be able to, you know, these people are out there on a daily basis, driving the same streets over and over, are going to be able to recognize, you know, the same person from one day to the next, to the next.
I have no doubt that the police officer would recognize them. I don't mean that. It would be my preference that it's, that it's zero days, and that is, it, it makes it more of a cut-and-dry issue. You either have a permit or you don't, and if you don't, you need to, you need to go obtain one. If I come back again and you're here, then you're in violation of the ordinance.
I have no, I have no judgments. Now, follow y'all's lead on that. I just try to make, with the idea that if you're here more than five days, it's more of a business for you than being someone maybe truly needy here for a day or so.
Can I ask a question on that note? I know I'm kind of coming in from using. Does that mean that when we are campaigning and we hold a sign up, that we need to go down to the police station and get a permit?
No, because when you're, that question's also asking me, when you're standing on a sidewalk just holding up a sign, you're, unless you're within 20 feet of an entrance to a TV or ATM machine, you know, unless you're in one of those areas that you can't solicit, then you're going to be fine, just like, you know, probably 99% of all sidewalk areas here in town are not going to be applicable to this unless it falls within one of those areas of personal security or personal safety. So if you're standing on the corner of-
Airview and the bypass?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I don't think any of those are going to fall within the-
That's kind of my spot.
There goes our medians.
Gene, that's not-
Don't worry about permit word by ATW.
I don't think any of those areas are going to fall within any of the prohibited areas. Now, if you start running out in the road and hand out cards, you know, we might, we might have a different issue, but, but just standing there at those places, holding up a sign, I don't think any of those places is going to fall in any of the prohibited areas.
But we would not need a permit?
No.
It's, I mean, I guess I'd-
And nor would you be passively soliciting, because you're, 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 well, you are passively soliciting, but you are passively soliciting in an area that's okay.
Then what is political solicitation?
You're still soliciting, but you're in an area that you can. Well, you're soliciting for political purposes, but you're still in an area that you can.
I think we need to include, Commissioner.
What section has to do with the guy sitting outside of Kroger's? I'm getting confused, panhandling versus overhandling or whatever, that is begging for money when I come out, or the guy that's over at the Minnemark lot when I come out or go in is asking for money? What is that, and where is that in here?
I still think that is probably panhandling or soliciting, although I would tell you, most of my concern dealt with public property, because private property owner rights, because I'm, I'm not sure I want a police officer to go into Kroger, for example, and say to somebody that they have given an okay to. You know, these private property owners have a lot of ability and a lot of rights, you know, more rights than we have on public property. They've got, they've got every right at Kroger or at Minnemark to go out and tell that person, leave. You do not have power permission to do this, and you need to leave. So in reality, Commissioner, I would hope that most, if that's an issue, that most of private property owners deal with that. But at the same time, though, a private property owner has the ability to say to somebody, sure, if you want to stand in front of my store and ask, you know, sell candy bars or cookies, that, that you can do that. So but again, I think most of my concern has been with public property, you know, the sidewalks, the parks, and everything else, with the idea that private property owners all be dealing with their own issues on private property. Again, on, on back to the permit, I didn't put a fee in. I did ask that a photo be taken. I did ask they give their true name, provide ID if they've got it. If they don't have an ID, just give us a certified statement that they don't have an ID, because a lot of people don't have IDs. I did ask for an address. I had a question about that, and my response was that, well, we do have revocation language in here, that if somebody doesn't comply with this and they get cited, then we've got the ability to revoke that permit. And if I revoke a permit by due process, I've got to give them notice, because I'm going to be in probably some trouble in, in somewhere in a court. If we revoke them, they didn't know anything about it, I didn't give them notice, now they're going to be arguing that I didn't have due process rights because you didn't notify me, you didn't tell me. I can't notify them, I can't tell them about an address. And I don't have to be the address they live, you know, they live, just, you know, an address of a sibling, a parent, just somebody that we can get mail to them if we ever have to give them some kind of a notice. Okay?
If they don't produce an address, they cannot get a permit.
This is a requirement here right now, they have to give us an address, because I am concerned if I don't have an address, then, then my revocation ability is now gone, because I can't give them any kind of a notice.
Is general-
Now, I think most people still should be able to give me maybe some address that they can get some kind of mail to from somewhere, at least I would hope, but I know some people that may not happen.
And you still use general delivery, so they could pick up their mail at the post office?
Yes. I mean, and, you know, hopefully, everybody's got somebody that they can, you know, they get some kind of, you know, information from, but, you know, still got a sibling somewhere that they can use their address or something. But, but my major concern was just a due process issue. Okay?
I appreciate that.
All right. And I think that's, again, I, I put in here, the permit's going to be good for two years, the police chief's got the ability to revoke, and if they do revoke, the maiden, an appeal can be made to the city manager's office. And we set out some of the language there. But that's pretty much it. I tried to make this thing as simple, I thought, as we could. Again, probably 80 to 85% of this came from the model ordinance from EMLA. You know, I guess if I always ask, you know, well, you know, what's, you know, is this thing going to withstand challenge, I guess? Yeah, I feel as good about this one probably as most, as most out there. This is such a, an area in flux, like, you know, right now with, with courts about what the First Amendment rights and what they are. But I feel pretty comfortable and confident, I think, about, about what we put in here. But again, anything that you've got issues with, I'll look at the one issue about expanding the roads to pick up some of the shoulders and, and some of that area as well, too. And if y'all want to, I can remove the five days and just make it, everybody's got to get a permit. I just did that just to, you know, because I think we all know, if somebody truly is here for one day, they're not going to get a permit. And we, I try to focus on those that are maybe more in a business of soliciting than, than, than maybe truly needy, but, but if the okay for that, I'll remove the five days as well.
Those that are, are here and truly needy on one-day issue, the officer's going to take time to try to help find them some assistance to get them where they need to be anyway, and that'd be the end of it.
Any other questions or comments?
Comments or que-
Hope it works.
All right.
I guess well done. Thank you, Gene.
I'll make those couple of changes, and we'll get on the agenda. Thank you, guys.
The next question will be, will it be on the next agenda for first reading, January 2nd?
We can put on the next one. I just got a couple of changes to make, and as soon as I make those changes, I'll run it by everybody to look at.
That'll be the question that I'm asked, so we'll, we'll move on from there.
Thank you all.
In the work session, we have a public comments section. If anybody has an item or issue, they want to bring this commission's attention, this will be their time for that. Your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, my name's Jeremy McFarland. My address is 198 Old Porter Pike here in Bowling Green. First of all, I just want to express my appreciation for Commissioner Denning and Nash for their concern regarding the concealed carry ordinance in city buildings. And I also want to say that I appreciate Commissioner Denning's concern about diversity in our local workforce. Passing a fairness ordinance would encourage additional diversity as well as attract more skilled people to our community. Fairness is good for business. My greatest hope for 2018 is that we can further discuss and eventually pass the fairness ordinance. Thank you all for your hard work this year, but especially to Commissioner Nash for all of his efforts towards making Bowling Green a more fair and welcoming community. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Other individuals hearing them, we'll close the meeting and have a special call meeting tomorrow at 3:30, just for the single item of annexing that property. We won't be broadcasting that. It's just a second reading of that annexation. Then our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you all very much.
Same to you, Mayor.